Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Grafton Select Board Meeting.
We've met with Mike, I'm Steve. And we've had our crew foreman out there as well to discuss the project. Borrowing any ledge, we would come down Paul Ranch, Intersections, like stage code. Heading south on the eastern side of the road, come up, go over a pole. Then underground to a termination box. And then continue underground to another termination box. And then further south to the existing pole area. To be constructed in the town road limits. As a board receiving.
Is this involving you found Eastman's on any property owners or just down through the road?
We're just being. We do have contacted one of the landowners, we both put a termination box under their property. Just has been communicated by email for them. But also name on site and so many needs for them to sign, so. Put it for that and then using connected.
So you're gonna go down the road, is that what about with Pearson Road or do you do all that or is it up to our town to do that?
No, no, we'll do that when we're up. We would have Michael Yelping, M and M Estimation, pretty well. And they would do all the work, the trenching and any repairs. Put it back to where it was.
And at any time is saying the road's gonna be closed?
On one way would be closed while we're doing the excavation work. There may be a portion of Paul Ranch that we would have to navigate as far as crossing underneath that portion. But the majority of your work would be along the street by the road.
And what about flag, did you have your own flaggers?
If there's, if there's time already to fly, we would divide.
Did you get that much traffic there?
Not one of that.
Just the, just the red.
You're gonna pull over at that call it, go ahead, that's correct. You can't go around the pole. Uh, no, you can't because it's kind of a wet area.
What's your timeframe?
If we get approval, I'd like to put some poles in the ground and we talked about we have to replace all the poles, the poles on each side of the colors. Uh, within the week probably and then perhaps start excavations in there. And the timeline would be about three weeks for me. We definitely would like to get out of there before.
Winter.
Winter, exactly.
Um, the support, have any questions?
So you're looking, you're looking for us to, to be okay?
That's correct.
And assuming that you disagree with me here, you want to sign?
That's correct, there's one that actually doesn't my same in charge.
Yeah, it must be the original.
So he's got it right there, yeah.
They have the original guy.
Yeah, the others are just perfect, you're reviewing.
I make a motion that we, that we accept their proposal to upgrade the power on the station.
I have a second. Um, all those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved, uh, your motion to have Green Mountain Power through the, um, the ground wiring on all stage room and Paul Ranch.
We're all gonna sign it, I tell you. Um, are you looking for signature state, you want each state's record, right? So we have this.
Uh, yeah, or you know, whatever power we were to put there, once a year, we would just maybe all like hold it on. It would be reported to the town as well.
Are these gonna be the real 12 thou poles that you've been putting up on 121 or?
No, that's a three-phase structure. So we felt space are capable, that's more may be, uh, this would be just the same page.
What's gonna happen to the rates? They gonna go up?
Yeah, I have nothing to do that. I'm not sure.
Well, thank you very much. It's round and round and less than.
Yeah, I'd like to see.
Just another question, are you all finished moving the power down at the side of the bridge?
Uh, we are, yes.
You're all done?
We are done, we have some cleanup work to do, we have some lots that we're creating and we have some stones to move. But other than that, because our portion of the redesign is done.
Okay, good.
So I guess we just come. Yeah, I can speak then, exactly.
I'm not sure, do we have to record this?
Yeah.
All right, so we can't do that tonight?
No, that's fine.
It's more Bill Kathy and then she'll have Kim do it in the morning and we'll forward it on to you.
Excellent.
But you got the approval, so it's go ahead.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Um, Brookfield Service Agreement?
Yeah, so we got our 2024 contracts and compared to last year. So we have the contract for the generator at the town garage and then off the elementary school. And they both went up, um, approximately a hundred dollars each. So we would just need, um, if we wanted to give any signing authority, I would just need a motion to do that and the motion to accept the 2024 contracts.
So move, so. What's the total of that agreement?
So for the elementary school, it's 1,171. And the town garage is 523.
So it's been moved and accepted, all in favor?
Aye.
Of approving the contract, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Um, it's been approved for the Brookfield Service Agreement for the school and for the town garage. Uh, municipal energy resilience program agreement.
So I've been working with, um, efficiency Vermont and, um, with a regional commission and this is the agreement. I believe you all had a chance to look at it, um, to do an energy efficiency assessment on this.
Do you have dates for that?
I don't, so if we approve the agreement, if I sign off on it, um, then we'll go into scheduling. It probably won't be until the spring, they would be able to get here and do the assessment.
And this is all covered under the grant?
Yeah, yeah.
No.
I make a motion that we approve the energy study and add Morgan's sign.
Okay, all in agreement to the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion has passed, um, for Morgan to sign off on the energy resilient programs for the town hall. Thanks Morgan for doing that. Um, Wyndham County Sheriff's Department, an increase of budget. I know we've been discussing, um, the sheriff's contract. And many of the voters have asked that the hours be increased. So who is on for the sheriff's department?
I don't see anyone there.
Um, you want state boarder on or should I, why would put it off for a while, see if he doesn't come up? Who, the sheriff? Oh, is he coming?
Yeah.
He said he's supposed to.
Oh, okay. It was a question for, okay.
All right, we'll move on to Wyndham Foundation Generator Town Contribution. Um, I did receive a letter from Bob McDonald, um, asking if the if the town of Grafton would, um, contribute to the cost of a new generator for the foundation. Since when our power goes off here, we rely on that generator. Um, so we've had some discussion and I guess I need to know from the board what your thoughts are.
I think we should buy our own.
Yeah, so do I. Um, it's, it's gonna be almost about the same money, they're looking for $14,000 or $17,000 or anything. By the time we do it and then, then we still have to go down and somebody has to come on the weekend and at night and switch the power off, which is not automatic. And then, then, then we're gonna be obligated down the road if if there's repairs on it, they're gonna ask us to do it, so I think the town of Grafton would have its own generator since we have emergency management here, if they have problems. We do it, it's been paid on automatic, we don't have to worry about anything else. That's how I feel now, and I know John does.
Something to add?
Um, doesn't make good sense to to just give the Wyndham Foundation money every year for the generator. See if it can be more expensive to do that. Makes more sense for us to have our generator.
So I make a motion that, that we send a letter to the Wyndham Foundation telling them, thank you, but no thanks, we're gonna proceed our own and I instruct Morgan to put the generator out to bed.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussions? All in favor of that motion? Say aye. Aye, sorry, who's second? Sounds like it's, um, I'm not, I'm not, I'm spoke, who blew that? Highway report, Mike, Colby. You up?
Basically should be here this week to finish the paving. We're gonna be doing our grading of tremendous brand we've had. And run around doing some of the, patching on some of the blacktop ourselves. And you should start hauling in our gravel to talk about the end of this week as well.
What are you getting gravel, Mike, again?
We didn't grab a lot, using sand.
Well, it's, well, it's there. Anything else to add, Colby?
And you got your.
Signs?
Your signs here.
Unfortunately, one?
I'm here.
Okay, I, my personal opinion is that we can, we should put up a sign that says no entry, it's, um, no entry, whatever the.
Yeah.
But I think the, it's up to the landlord, I want to put the no trespassing sign.
At the end?
Yeah, that would be my idea.
Probably, I think, I mean, we can definitely put enough at the intersection, is that where we're talking down where our horse could turn and be?
I guess so, yeah.
I, I was, I was imagining and I was driving a few times today and I was wondering honestly, we didn't need to. I was imagining one as you're going up before you made the left.
You're gonna break right off the bridge, I guess if you want an encompassed road.
Well, I was really thinking about just after that Merrells, you know, so we make that left. Because that's really Fortinese road and then I wondered if by Fairbanks there shouldn't be another to help people just like stop going further up the hill. Because once they start going up the hill, they know where to go, but are.
They can't do that.
Except here where we are.
Yeah.
I don't think you can do that, I think you, yeah, put it at the bottom and that's it.
We did want to do Chappell and it actually worked pretty good. Now everybody stopped going up there, because we have the same problem there as well.
Was the sign saying no outlet or something?
Yeah.
It says no outlet, it would, that was what I was thinking by that.
Yeah, and actually worked quite well.
Well, I, I can, I can give you a real life scenario, um, I had that problem with Avery Park because I'm on the GPS that it goes through. And I requested four or five years ago for the select board to put up a sign and since the sign's up, nobody comes up my road anymore.
Right, it does count.
Yeah.
But I mean, maybe we can try to go on and see how that goes. Because more signs, more money.
Yeah, yeah.
People really don't like all those things.
I appreciate even starting with one. I appreciate anything on having the turnaround operator and plus there's no sound, they know people are truly lost and, you know.
You're at the end?
Yes.
Could put in.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm often there alone and I have to say it's really a little uncomfortable in the dark or on the weekend, unsettling.
Well, glad we could do that, please.
Yeah, I appreciate it, thank you. And then the other one is up top, I guess.
I think that's probably best because it really, I mean, road stops there and it's kind of yours.
Exactly, okay. Great, thank you.
And the Townsend Road signs?
Those are, are we talking speed limit signs, is that where we're?
I think it was a blind driveway and speed.
Yeah. Okay, that's what I got them by the bridge, right? Okay.
So on the Townsend side of the bridge?
Yeah. Just for it, right?
Right, that's.
Can you reduce the speed?
You want, were, were those as well? Because I know you guys brought up the speed on the signs up there.
We talked about.
Well, that 50 mile an hour sign really needs to go towards Townsend, but.
I think they need to be moved or moved on the other side of the way.
You have like another one mile till Townsend, probably.
You come down bottom all of a sudden and people are sat down, they're sitting down on the earth place.
It's up to you guys, if you want to move them out more, we can move it out more, I guess.
Do you think you have the tender option to reduce that to 95 on top of it?
What's it, 40 now?
Yeah, it was from 25 after it was 24.
You can do what, five miles an hour without?
You can change it five miles an hour without doing a formal study.
We shared.
35.
Yeah, right.
You got your. 35 east of the bridge, is that where we're gonna go?
Where it'd be a little bit back. You don't want just 35, you know, 35, if you're hitting the brake, you see 50.
So you're gonna move it 50 further out.
Yeah, move it 50 further out.
Is there any reason why, I'm just curious about the other homeowners, because a lot of those roads are pretty windy up there and I'm sure and probably people aren't here, but maybe probably appreciate that too. Um, I can't see where the mess is really, but it's gonna be with the death that happened along here too.
Yeah, very head of town.
I don't see any reason personally, but obviously that's up to the family.
Right.
I'd like to see it all 35.
Yeah.
Should you do 35 and then change to 50 to 45? If you, you know, you can do five miles an hour?
Oh, you can change it 50 down to 35.
Five, five miles an hour, be careful of that.
Yeah, and it's.
You did 35 and then 45 and move it a little closer to town.
I'm confused, you can go from 40 to 35, that was studied.
Right.
But you can't go from 45 to 50 to 45.
You can, you can only do five miles an hour.
Right, but you can't.
It's only five mile into.
But if you don't, you don't have the 50 mile an hour, it's just safer to use.
But it's gonna stay long. Right, what?
The sign almost, I mean, it's mainly for the actually like don't know, you can turn the road, they can see that 50 mile an hour.
Yeah.
And they start there, there's.
There's this light trade lane there where I see your people just like right direction.
That's it. Be the vendor.
Right, we're somewhere on, on a, on a road in front of one with no signage, is it 40?
It's expected, it's really, if it's not close, it's not, unless you're within a town that has an ordinance saying otherwise.
So do we have, can we do an ordinance?
You have an ordinance, don't you, you could.
It's what we just did.
Just.
Well, that is the.
Well, I'll just.
If you have one for all of your roads in your town, all your dirt roads, all of your pay roads all have, are covered by an ordinance.
Yeah.
Within your town.
I guess I had in my head it was 40.
They all at one time are 35 miles an hour.
All your dirt roads.
All of your, yes. Um, just out of curiosity, because I'm not familiar with this, what is, what's involved with this? I'm assuming some costs, some time and some medics for other people.
Morgan?
It's done through the sheriff's department and I know they've done it, we got that through those. Um, so it would be a little bit more intensive, they would have a deputy come out and rate our gun and it would just take time. I, I would have to check on the fee if that would be.
Let's see. Just had to notice everyone in town that they're doing this.
Yeah.
Why don't we just try reducing the speed by five minutes, five miles, I'm gonna make it everybody.
If we increase the sheriff budget and ask them to patrol like bus slots in town, I think ideally we would, we would see it.
I mean, it's more than one problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, you know, there's those that are speeding that aren't paying attention to any kind of signs. Well, that, what we're, what the proposal is, is to increase the amount of hours paid by police for the sheriff, but we also to restrict them from going on back roads and things like that, as I've been just working the, the four hotspots, which is town from the old cable, which the town graph and then and 35.
There was one other thing, and one of the letters I don't give order to you, but he said that he doesn't stop unless they do over 50 miles an hour. Well, we're gonna get that changed, because I don't know where that came from.
The study was based off of 10 miles per hour, but he opened, and not to get him trouble or whatever, he's like, I typically only start tipping people at 15. So like.
So it was just one of those signs.
Yeah. So if, if the town, if you easily move that 40 to 35, now is there, I assume there's more to move that 50 a bit further out because of where of the location or?
I don't know how far we can push that.
And then you can move the 50 to 40.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, that's it, yeah.
The sign. Might as well.
Probably I'll look at the ordinance to see what it reads in that road.
Yeah. Uh, Derek just joined.
He's not gonna.
Kind of like just sitting down.
Okay, so what are we actually doing here? So let's, let's make sure that we're all on the same page.
I can check the ordinance since he will.
No, I don't need that, what are we doing? We're gonna move the signs?
You want to change your 40 mile an hour signs to 40 to 30? Out to basically June's.
You want in a blind driveway?
In a blind driveway, right.
Are we gonna move the signs too?
We want to move.
We're not gonna move, the only sign we're gonna move is the 50 mile an hour sign if we can. If we push it out towards Townsend further.
Okay.
Same, we have.
Can we change to 45?
Or ways.
Yeah.
The ordinance, and see what it reads.
Yeah.
To see if you can get away with it.
And do we need to redo speed sign?
There should be one anyway on every side of the road.
There should be, I believe.
So I think it goes there.
The side is from Townsend and before the bridge, it really isn't enough time to slow down.
I'll give you in.
Yeah, you're not gonna be at 35 miles an hour. By the time they hit June's hour source, our two houses.
Yeah.
And we're the ones coming out of that driveway that they can't see.
I think we push.
So there's need to be pushed.
For around, I think.
Like we did on 121.
Yeah. Yeah, we moved it out a little bit. It's like a 10 mile.
So they're slowing down for that in success.
So you, you didn't go over the acres, right? No, we, we want, let's finish the.
We have to finish his report. So now you've got Bell Road, Colbert's, Colbert.
That is not there because we need a motion. Uh, that we will have to put the engineer out to bid on the Bell Road pole at the end of the blocks on Eastland Road. Because that, they wanted the same engineer that did it in four in my dream uh, to do, do the blocks. And this one really was the only one available at the time, it's, it's, it's not gonna be any more money enough, it's just it's similar if we just have this one engineer who will.
What should I write on this? Morgan has really written down.
I agree. It was moved by whoever set an advice link that pursuant with provision and the procurement policy providing for the labor bids for items costing between 5,000 and 20,000. The select board raised the necessity to put the engineering for alignment of the covert number one on Bell Road and the block wall on Eastman Road out to bid based on both the cross state and the selectmen's familiarity with the engineering firm's capabilities and work quality.
So move.
We, we have to engineer, they've ordered to get money from people to do the work. And the Bell Road one, I think was 6,000 and the block was 8,000.
So when you say engineering, it's hard, biological study?
That's already done. The Bell Road is aligned of a call, that's what they're doing. The block wall is, they're gonna come up with a better solution than they did 12 years ago. So it doesn't keep.
And you know this, and you're very current.
So is it gonna be a bigger clover because of that?
Yeah.
That would make sense.
That's why I moved it.
Okay, do you have a second? Did you second, John? So it's been moved in second on the clover at the Bell Road, all those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's passed. Um, and anything else on your highway?
Will we make a decision what we're doing on the town road?
Yeah, I think so.
We're gonna, we're gonna put the, this, the driveway sign.
Yep.
135 mile per hour sign. That's it for right now.
We'll see if we can push the 50 mile an hour. If you want to change it. Yeah.
Then we're gonna move the.
Yeah.
Any other things for highway? Are we, Mike? If not, if not, we'll move to Wyndham County Sheriff.
I think you. I might be broke there where it's nowhere, the culvert that comes down from Townsend Road. Uh, sorry, turn around, turn around. And is that on your list of repairs, like some of the, okay, I feel like that culvert looks like.
Which is ready.
They're too, yeah, they're kind of getting pretty quiet, a lot of them is, when the blood happens, like stones, whatever.
New response.
And then trying to, you guys, a lot of people get stuck, kind of needs, like last time it happened. I don't know if that's something you can put in our future, add it on the list, the list is long.
Yeah, I get it.
Something I thought of, thanks.
Any other comments from you folks on the signs or? Thank you for. Okay, Wyndham County Sheriff's Department want to increase the budget. Mark?
Who was that, Mark?
Yeah, Mark Ian.
Mark, what, what we did at the budget meeting was increase the dollar amount so we could have more hours to film, to patrol. Uh, that budget doesn't start until July 1st of next year. But I think we, what we'd like to do is have it start now if you can cover those more hours. And the other thing is, uh, we'd kind of like the four major roads covered, Townsend, uh, Coltonville, uh, Saks River and Chester. And kind of lay off patrol in Middletown Cemetery, ones like that. And it would give you more, more time, uh, and maybe we'll solve part two of the problems that we've had. So maybe we can increase the hours more.
Oh, I think it was to 12 hours per month.
Yes, it's 12 hours now per month.
Rather than eight.
Increase patrol, yeah, so increase.
Could you list the, the four roads you want to target again?
Well, rest of the four roads, you'd 12.
I think the mute button got hit on the owl. I think the mute button got hit on the owl.
Townsend Road. Cambridge Port Road. Chester Road. And Holtonville Road, you're back to town. And that's it, and that's down. Stop right.
Uh, so to the question of if we can start now, yes, uh, as long as. Uh, you did not pass. Uh, an article under town meeting for the funds that appropriated law enforcement, then that shouldn't be an issue, as long as you have it in the budget, we can amend the. Their current contract to do that now, um. So, yeah, I, I can send over an amendment, uh, to that effect. Probably tomorrow, if you'd like, uh, like to act on that.
And what about stopping it at ten miles an hour? Ten miles an hour, mile.
That doesn't mean you just ignore all the back roads, if there's a problem, you, you have to. Go on the back road, we'd like the majority of that time spent on those four roads.
Yeah, what I, uh, what I would suggest doing is not capturing the contract focus on the roads, uh, rather that we just emphasize our. Understanding of your desire of how to use the funds, uh, to be proactive on these four roads, uh, but it would not. Limit the rest of the town from accessing services when they need it.
And, and the other thing is, if, how many miles of the speed limit do you, uh, stop somebody for speeding?
There's no actual answer to that question, uh, it is to an officer's individual discretion. Uh, we allow that officer, uh, discretion, uh, so I can't define it. The, uh, if you were talking to me when I was doing a lot of speed enforcement, it would be different based on zones and factors of the zone, so if it's a school zone, that carries different factors. Center of town carries different factors, congested residential areas, um, versus sparse open road, uh, where there's, um. Not other factors at play, uh, we might be more lenient, um, and that follows the training model that my deputies receive. So, there's not an exact answer to that.
Well, I think, well, one of you, I don't know which one, had, had, uh, said that, uh. He would not stop anybody unless they were doing over fifteen miles an hour.
There are some people who practice, uh, I, I shouldn't say wouldn't stop, but usually won't issue a ticket past fifteen miles an hour. Uh, an example, use of that is Route Thirty, uh, in, uh. The town of Townsend, past the, the Townsend Dam, we don't have a lot of crashes in that section, Route Thirty is an open road. Uh, and so, understanding that there are factors that, that do layer into that. Uh, but generally speaking, uh, we have, uh, had people stopped under fifteen miles an hour over the speed limit, uh, and ticketed. Uh, within recent time, um, but to answer that, or the organization, uh, would be impossible.
But some of the, I wrote it posted at fifty, so that means they could go sixty five, and there's not too many of our roads that are, uh. Are good enough, you know, that you should be doing that fast. I, I think anything over ten miles an hour. Is too much.
The, um, uh, I would argue at times, sometimes over five miles an hour is too much, but, uh, again, that all comes into the context of the specific area. Uh, if one individual said that they, they have a practice of not stopping past fifteen miles an hour. Um, I mean, I've heard it before, uh, it's not what we train, um. But. At the end of the day, we do continue to allow the officer discretion, because they have to factor in a variety of things that target around traffic safety. Uh, that we can't just capture into a definitive policy.
Can we say what we would like to have it be?
You can say it, but, um, I will communicate it, but it doesn't mean it will necessarily happen.
The bottom line is, we're trying to reduce speeding in these areas, and it's become a problem. Uh, especially with some young kids out there with their trucks, um. Noisy trucks, and doing all the skid marks. But it's a safety issue for everybody, and some of these roads, you know, right now, it's getting darker earlier. There, we don't have street lights other than in the village here, and we have windy roads, you know, this is Vermont, um. And we just want, I can people safe, and people need to slow down, but I think it's also important, your visibility is critical. Uh. We want your presence, and I think it's gonna help slow down the folks, and they'll get the message. But, thank you so much for, um, your service, and we're. Very happy to, uh, increase the budget because we really need your service for the town.
Uh, um, I will get that forwarded over to Morgan, uh, tomorrow, uh, I will try tomorrow, Morgan, um, we're getting ready for our audit, so. There's a lot of papers going left and right, uh, but we'll get that over as soon as possible, uh, and I will, uh. Pass along, uh, the areas to target to my staff, uh, as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do, do we need a motion to? I make a motion that we, uh, increase. Uh, the police protection effective immediately to, was it ten hours? Twelve hours per, for me, I mean, per month. And that we, um. Designate, uh, particular hotspots to be, uh, police.
I'll second that.
And those, we're still watching. Yeah, the hotspots would be Cambridge Port Road. Uh, Townsend Road, thirty five. And, and obviously the town.
They all in favor of the motion? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
That's been passed.
Thank you.
Burke Treasure, Kim, she on?
No, no reporter.
Committee reports, personnel.
Well, I don't think we have any real reports. I'm just waiting on, you know, applications.
The cemetery, uh, report is that we're still waiting. To see whether or not the new owners are going to, um. Agree with the old owners for the additional land at the Holtonville Cemetery.
Has somebody bought that house?
Not yet, but it's up for sale, so I guess they're, they're, they're waiting.
I think it's been reduced a little, you know, but I saw that, and I've stopped, and. Nobody's been there. So we're kind of stymied until they. We've opened the trees at the Little Town Cemetery.
Uh, John, Mike has a little up there.
It's, it's been removed over the wall, apparently, I think it's the people who did the mowing, but I'm assuming. But it's not the cemetery anymore. They cut it all up and put it over the wall. So it's on the.
So they had to cut it up some or move it.
Oh, yeah.
So, so everything out of.
Everything got it on there.
So we have to work on it.
It's not your problem now.
Yes.
Now the neighbors.
So, so is that something you can prepare up?
Well, you have to cut a three or two to get there.
That's a problem.
It's alright.
You get, we have permission to get it all.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It'll be taken care of. Sure, I guess, because I heard, well, I'd say it was.
So now we just.
No clue for that.
Now we just have to get the cemetery, the stone replaced, but that won't happen until spring.
Unless Mike can do it now.
Yeah, maybe, well, when we contact you, uh, Mike.
Can't talk to him last week when he was here, and I don't know whether it's.
Yeah, but now that they're done, maybe he can take a look at it and see if he, when he can do it or do it next year.
Did, did you have some bids on stamp cutting?
We didn't get the bids yet.
Any other business?
Yes. Um, Don, I, I will direct it to you, but we did get a letter from the Wyndham Foundation in writing. That they are gonna be responsible for fifty percent of the COVID. Okay? So, we did, we did accomplish that. Uh, the second thing is, and John, or you wanna do it, that we had a meeting with the state down the Walker Bridge. And, um, as of March first, they will post, it will be a one lane road until completion. Not before. That's on September eighth, or September first, so. Look forward to that.
There's still gonna be a temporary bridge though, right?
No, no, it's gonna be one lane.
So there's no temporary bridge, I.
Was it, I think she is one lane of the existing bridge.
They're gonna demolish the, the existing bridge, and then they build a new one, and then demolish the other one, that's how it's gonna work.
Okay, there's a lot of arguing about whether or not there should be a temporary bridge, remember?
Yes.
So, the answer is no, there won't be.
No.
Like I said, it's quite a lot of money that's actually come.
I'm not sure it's any money, but.
Oh, I know, we're aware of, aren't you, anything that we have to worry about, we all be dead in ten years, and so.
So, but we leave it in us, in January. They've gotta do, fill a pier, I guess.
Yeah.
In the river.
Yeah.
So, in January, they're gonna somehow build and pour this pier. So that they can keep the schedule of construction starting that way. I guess.
Okay, any other business? How about public comment?
Hey, question.
Okay.
Uh, let's go back to the wastewater for a minute. Is there a ninety percent meeting, is there more coming than we already know?
Yes, the answer, the answer to that is yes. Uh, they're working on, there will be a ninety percent report, okay? Uh, I don't know when, but we will probably know, uh, Seth and I and Morgan have another meeting. Uh, a week from tomorrow, uh, Wednesday. Uh, so we're trying to pin down when that ninety percent meeting. Uh, Seth and I had a vet with the attorney today, which is covered by the agreement. Uh, about the fire district or the wastewater district, and, um, we'll, you'll be hearing some more information about that. In the next week with the, of coming weeks, but, uh, that's where it stands.
I was told probably or obviously, that the project will not be allowed to proceed unless it's fully covered. Fully financed, is that your understanding of it?
No, I don't know where that came from, we, we don't know.
But we do know that the water part, it's a total water part of this world out there.
As far as the town is concerned, yes. And, and, and they, the, the, they told us, state or the feds, I'm sure. Told us that we're not capable of having a water district. Seriously, I, I think. Because you need to have, you, you're not big enough, we need engineers, the staff to run it. Twenty-four hours a day and all that kind of stuff, so that's wrong. And now we'll just be back to the wastewater.
There's a lot, there, to have a drinking water system, there's all. Kind of slew of requirements that are involved with it.
The only other, the only other thing that's kind of pending, uh, and it hasn't been decided yet, is that, I think. Uh, Seth and I, Seth and I made a recommendation, is that why don't they put a. Water filter on any of these wells that have these PIFs. And I don't know, Seth, we never got an answer.
Yeah, hopefully they'll, the next meeting.
Yeah. Because there are, there are other wells that have this problem, that, um. Bowens, uh, Charlie's.
Charlie does.
He, he has, he has that issue, and there are apparently other wells now that are, that are, this is coming out. And, um. So that, we don't know what the status of that is gonna be, but, um.
But that has nothing to do with the wastewater.
No, and, yes, it does, it'll be, should be funded under the wastewater project, but they.
It, it, it does a little bit, because if you install the charcoal filters at people's alleys. Then you're not gonna be transporting the PFO up to the site where the wastewater would be disposed at. So that's why it fits in.
Public comment? Yes.
Are there any plans to repair the cemetery fence in the Little Town?
The answer to that is yes, uh, it's, it's my fault, I wanna go over to Springfield Fence, just to get an estimate. To tear it, tear, take it down and replace it with a new one. I don't know if we, we can do it, but I, I, it's on my list, it's just been, there's been a lot of meetings going on here. So I had kind of, kind of do it on Springfield, but I, I would see if they're going to do, we tried to put it out the bid to a couple of other contractors, and. We didn't, didn't get any new spots, so we'll try again with Springfield Fence.
Is it all supposed to be painted?
Um, you can't paint it, it's still shot. Things all rotten, it's, it's beyond there, been in there for I don't know how many years ago.
You've painted one, one fence before, let's appear. The gate. Any other public comments? Hey, our next meeting is November twentieth. Twenty twenty-three at fifty AM here at Town Hall, I need a motion to adjourn.